In general, journalists. Hopefully. Um. I'll read the land acknowledgement and then we'll get on in general. Think we're gonna have a long day, so let's get. If you can. Quickly, we respectfully acknowledge that the county of Calhoun is stated on treaty twenty. Mishisagi territory and in the traditional territory of the Mishisagi and Chipmunks. Collectively, new treaties. First nations. Which are Curb Lake, Ramon, Iowa, the powder, the scuba, I'm also late. And for gene hot first nations, we acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations from the area. And recognize that the religion that lives in happens at the stairs of its lands. And of honor since time. Thank you, um. Adoption of the agenda. Did I have a move or second to that? Okay. Okay, all in favor? Carrie? Any, any conflict of interest that anybody, oh, hi, Jen. We just started, so we're right on time.
Great.
Any, any? Here any conflict that is either now ahead of time or because of agenda? See, I don't know, but we could send agenda item five. Um, are there any? Questions on the consent agenda? Anybody want to take any of the items off the council's field of the directory? Gina? Could I have a motion to? Yeah, I have a motion to. Send the agenda. Um, move by. Jen? How about Jen? Exactly. Okay. All in favor? Here. Absolutely, motion to the director. I would say that you go first. All right, um, going to item six then, um. Is either pronounced, of course. And Andrea, do you want to take us through that?
Um. Sorry, the, um, I don't think we have anything from the minute into your business.
No, it's financial.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. We don't have a financial report today. So actually, I just got, um, an email yesterday afternoon from Andrea Robinson, a director of corporate services, saying that the, um, actuals have just been updated. Just got access to them yesterday. Um, and it was away, didn't have time to make the report accessible and into the agenda packet. Um, so we'll have that for the next week.
It's something where the end of the actuals are going to change anything.
Yeah. I was just curious if you give the surplus and what was the amount?
So that actually, we don't know yet.
She didn't have her count. It was seventy last week.
Yeah, I saw notes that she was just very. But I don't know. Yes.
To the end, that, that's another item, uh, transferring the role here in surplus. I think that motion is really just so that. Some, like whenever the surplus is.
Trans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't have a motion to, uh, to, um.
So that one you can just.
We, we won't need that, so I'll just stick that there on sign. Um, year-end budget surplus be transferred to reserve. You want to talk about the year-end surplus before we.
Um, so at the county council meeting, not this much, but the one last year, the special meeting, um, Andrea Robinson, uh, director of corporate services.
Could you guys on the screen here, it's okay?
Um, mention.
I, I can, I, I could hear, um, Andrea quite pretty clearly, but I can't hear you really clearly, Dave.
Okay, because I'm probably talking. I'm talking into my computer.
It seems a little, seems a little garbled when I hear some of them speaking.
Yeah, okay, we'll just speak a little louder. Maybe Erin can turn up the volume for it.
Thank you.
Oh, good.
Need to move you guys both.
Ooh. We're on the move.
I'll just wait until, uh, till you've been moved.
Like you're sitting at the table now.
Yeah.
So, thanks, Erin.
Truly awesome technology.
Item six point one hundred new businesses. For discussion. Andrea, do we know what our year-end surplus is?
We don't have a finalized, uh, year-end amount.
What's your best guess?
It may be around seven thousand dollars. That's enough. That was, uh, reference of the meeting last week at county council. Um, I don't have the final.
And is that largely driven by not filling the CEO position? No.
Some, we had quite a delay in hiring our staff to when they made the offer.
Yeah.
And when they could actually start because there was a very long way in the criminal rap or record checking, virtual stuff, any record checks that we need to get. The police OPG was very behind, so we were ready to hire them, but, um, it actually took a lot longer, so that.
So it's largely driven by, by staffing relates.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. That's usually what. All right, um, I have a motion and that general motion, we don't know what it is yet, so the motion reads. Be resolved as the Halbert County Public Library Board directs that the library twenty twenty-three year-end budget surplus be transferred to reserves. Once the auditing process is complete. So once we know what the number is, we'll move it into surplus. Any discussions? I have a move or a second, please? Move by. Cease the thought. All in favor? Here. Okay, the next item is a twenty twenty-four budget discussion. Now. Um. Just a couple of things before we start, so. County council, those viewers, um. People on the screen and these over there. All anyone viewer. Jackie, Ben, and Chance, who's listening to the YouTube. Council essentially said it after a quick long discussion, um, great discussion, quite frankly. Um, that, um, in the end, they're going to give us, we're asking us to reduce our budget by a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That was the motion. So. I, I haven't seen what the county. Finance department has done since that, that decision made. But I would assume that as they finish their budget, they're showing us having a budget submission of one hundred and fifteen thousand about the last time. Our third budget commission, would that be correct? Andrea?
The third, yeah. Based on.
So that's the starting point. Now, the way this works is pretty simple. County council can give us whatever amount of money they want. Uh, and that's where their involvement with our budget stops. It's up to us as a board to determine what we're going to do with the money they've given us. And that can range from broadest decisions possible from shutting the place down completely to just trying to figure out what to do to make our budget balance. So that's the discussion for today. Now Andrea, do you want to give us any background on some of the work you may have done? Kind of prepare us for this?
Absolutely.
And, and, and. I'll say this right at the very beginning. What Andrea may or may not be talking about is entirely speculative at this point. It's not been decided. The board has to make the decision, so she will give us some guidance, some of her thoughts. On how best to approach this particular issue. That doesn't mean we, we have to support it. That means we can throw it out, garbage we want and start all over. It'll be that night of man, but I'm just putting a sentence there, as you know. Okay. Over to you.
All right. Um, okay, so just to go back to our draft number three, we had that special meeting on Friday, March the first, where we made. The reductions, um, uh, we talked about cutting the book budget, uh, boarding committee fees, canceling press reader. Uh, cutting the mileage from Dorset being, uh, um, connected with another ranch, uh, uncovering mileage. And we made a cut to the training budget. And what we kept in the budget but decided to move to reserves was, uh, two thousand dollars for air filters. Six thousand five hundred dollars for the IPRAD refresh, and we decided to pause the automatic transfer. That we usually have every year of six thousand dollars into reserves for, um, IT purchases. Because we have such a healthy surplus. Um, so in our draft number three that the library board put forward, um, we had reduced it from draft two by thirty-four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. And in draft three, we were requesting from the county for the library, one million, three hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and one dollars. Um, county council delivered it, um, and then, um, it went to a recorded vote. And the, um. So that the amount that we have, as David was referring to, that's now, um, been given to us for the library board, for you to decide, um. How to make changes in the budget accordingly, is one thousand, or sorry, one million, two hundred and ten thousand, uh, and fifty dollars. So that amount is less than the amount that we, the library received in twenty twenty-three. By twenty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars. Um, in a year where we, um, decided to open a branch in the Dorset Recreation Center. So we know we have this reduction, um, so based on our draft number three proposed budget that we have put forward. We're going to need to identify, uh, further reductions that add up to approximately a hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, so today I'm going to be seeking direction from the board as to where, within the budget, we're going to address the shortfall. Um, public libraries are service organizations and some of the main, uh, things that we use our money for, uh, staff wages and collections. So, uh, with a, a cut of this magnitude, um, we're going to have to look at those two areas, um. In order to find the savings. Okay, so, um, and I just wanted to highlight because it was a topic of, uh, considerable discussion at the county council meeting. That the library does have a healthy reserve balance right now. Um, our, uh, at the year end of twenty twenty-three, the balance of library reserves was two hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two. And as we've just discussed in this meeting, uh, we're estimating that there may be seven thousand dollars, um, added from, from. The last year, oh, sorry, from, yeah. From twenty twenty-three. Um, so this is a big topic, um, what I'd like to recommend, uh, is, uh, to organize our discussion into four sections. Uh, first discuss potential reductions in our collections budget. Uh, next, that's potential reduction in other expense lines, not including wages. Um, then third topic, uh, approaches what we want to take, uh, in terms of reductions to staff wages, to service changes. So that would look like changes in operating hours or, um, you know, changing, um, branches, whether they're open or. How, how frequently, or maybe we want to close additional days over long weekends, that type thing. And, uh, number four, use of library reserves in the twenty twenty-four budget. Um, and before we dig into this discussion, because I know it's going to be, uh, me too, Jen, I just, uh, want to extend a huge and heartfelt thank you. To the members of the admin team, um, who have worked so hard over the last. Week, week and a half, um, we've really been gathering so much information and trying to figure out when things were new and. Um, you know, what are the, the patterns of lock-in traffic and circulation on different days of the week? And, um, it's been a huge team effort and we've all been working really, really hard and I just want to say thank you. Um, Melanie's here in front of me and, uh, to the team, um. In the back, it's been a team effort to get to. Put together all of this information that we're going to talk about today, so. Okay, so, um, to those of you in person that are here, I thought it would be handy to print out the draft number three budget. So this is the document that everyone's seen before. If those of you who are, um, on screen, you have access to it through Civic Web, uh, it's not a new document, but. In case people want to scribble down notes, um, I may print it out for those of us who aren't here today. Um, and actually, I hope you want to know it.
Oh, I just wanted to ask a question about two things. I wasn't listening carefully enough. One, uh, the existing reserve figure. Is two, two, two points, uh, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two. And then there's an additional seventy from the current year.
But that's, we're still waiting for the exact figure. That's what Andrea Robinson suggested.
The other thing was we have three sections we're going to discuss this afternoon. Or, I mean, fourth, and I've got three down, but I just wondered if you could just give me the four again to make sure.
Collections, things to do with collections, then things to do with, uh, other expense lines excluding wages.
Okay.
Uh, then approaches to, uh, reductions in staff wages through service changes.
Right.
And then use of the library reserve.
So I did get the stuff.
Yeah, yeah, you got it.
Cease up.
If, if I may, and not, and not to jump over what Andrea is suggesting, but. We're looking at those two hundred, there's approximately two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in reserves. And also whatever is going to be probably the first six months of this year that you're not going to have a deputy CEO, correct? As also is going to be a surplus that you're going to have, so. I mean, it's, it's all well and good that we sit here and we talk about the collection and cutting wages and hours and stuff. But if the direction of the board is to use reserves for those things, I don't see the point in us. You know, hashing out why we would even consider cutting back hours and things if the money's there. Keeping in mind that I understand that reserves are meant for capital projects. But they're also there for a rainy day. This is a rainy day this year in, in the county budget and with all the lower tier municipalities this year. Um, again, county council cannot direct, but I know when we discussed it, that it seemed like that was a, a perhaps a wiser thing to do this year. Rather than cutting hours or, you know, closing branches, that's, that's definitely not the intent and I. Your email that went out kind of made it sound like that. I just, I don't want anybody on the board or staff to think that because that's, that's not the case, but. When you're looking at, you have at least two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars to reserve, plus whatever you're not going to spend on the seat deputy CEO for the first part of this year. I think you're well covered in a hundred and fifteen thousand to keep status quo, but that's just my opinion. I obviously can't give direction, but. I, rather than even discussing closing and collections and things, that's where I need to help.
Jen, Ben, Jack.
Um, I concur. I'd like to talk about that first, just because it was a hot topic at council and. And for better or for worse, I think the vote went the way it went. On the back of that conversation, so I think it, it's worthwhile. Hearing what the full board has to say about it, um. Uh, the, the only, I think, correction I would make to, to what Lisa's just said is, and Andrea, correct me if I'm wrong, but. Given your, in, your anticipated plan of, um. Strategizing staffing moves, et cetera, et cetera, you would be filling the deputy role. Right away by, by moving people up, so there won't actually be that savings as soon as humanly possible. Is that, is that correct?
Correct, and it's actually one of the, um, things I had in the, yeah, on, in my, that section to talk about, but we could, um, mention it right now. So at our last meeting, we had, um, talked about the staffing model review with, uh, the review to be done and presented to the board in June. Um, and, uh, we also discussed the need for a deputy CEO. Immediately to support, um, myself and the branch team and the, the whole team, essentially. Um, so I just wanted to confirm today, given this new information about, um, the change in our budget. Uh, if I am still able to proceed with, uh, temporary. Assignment for one of our, um, uh, admin staff members. I have put together a letter and I have, I had Andrea Robinson review it. And, um, if you're still in agreement with that plan, I will, um, offer it to the staff member tomorrow and they'll start on Monday. And then, um, the, I put the end date, uh, the following week after the June board meeting. So is that, everyone still on board with that?
Yeah. Jen, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, just, just quickly, the tail end of that then is. The anticipated savings might be June, July, August, et cetera, when, after, um. The CEO has done her reconfiguration, the board is in agreement, there may be some staff savings then. So it's not like we'll not have any savings. It'll just be at the second half of the year, not at the first half of the year.
Well, there'll still be some in the, again, in this department, because you're not going to pay this person this deputy CEO wages. Plus their current wages, so there is going to be somewhat of a savings, even though you're bumping them up.
There's, there will be some savings, but, um, so that person will move into the deputy role at the lowest. Like step one.
Yeah.
But then we'll have a branch staff member temporarily act in the role that. She won't be doing, so.
Or somebody else then, like.
Well, we'll be able to, I will, uh, um, put out an expression of interest for staff who are interested in that role and opportunity. Um, so it won't be a huge.
We can't say, yes, thank you.
Okay, so that, um. Jack, you.
I had a question.
Before we do that.
My question was about the, um, the estimate of, of the reserves. This two thousand, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, is that? After what we've budgeted for?
That's before.
Before, okay, so we've already essentially committed like. A large chunk of that.
And we've already, uh, committed, um.
Your eighty thousand.
Eighty-three thousand. Yeah, eighty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty. Yeah, eighty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars is already.
It's already, yeah, yeah.
Please, if you, if you, if you think in the council might put seventy in. Because of this year, and you take out the, it leaves around two hundred and ten thousand sitting in our, in our reserves, give or take a few. Okay, so we're, well, let, let's deal with the issue of. Uh, Andrea's question about being able to move forward and getting that temporary position filled. Is everybody okay with that? Subject to her coming back to us in June with her report and how she's going to do the restructuring. And then we'll make the final decision. Anybody opposed to that? If so, tell us why. If not. All right. There's your directions, okay? Now, let's move to the discussion about using the reserves. As a starting point, which I think is a good thing to start with, because if everybody wants to use the reserves. I would largely say the meeting's over, but I, I don't, I mean that facetious.
And just for, I can't make, sorry, just for board members who may not know too, so if. Reserves are generally capital in most departments. When it comes to the library, if something should happen to this building, it's not going to be. The library board's money that will fix it. It'll actually come from. Dyser, I get it, the Dyser, so just, just. If the roof falls off tomorrow, it's Dyser's problem, not the library board's problem, and that money wouldn't come from those reserves. Though your capitals for libraries and things like your photocopies, copiers, your, you know, your beautiful big screen TV, your desk. Not even the desk, this is actually Dyser's, too, it's kind of.
Computers, a printer.
Yes.
Copyers.
Yeah, whereas Dyser owns the building and.
And maintains it and furnishes.
Yes. Just in case that wasn't something.
So, um. Jennifer, did you want to say something? We're going to talk about today, the, now, at this point now, about the use of reserves.
Yeah, I didn't hear your facetious comment. I only heard that you said it was facetious.
Oh, I said, well, if everybody decides we're going to use a reserve to solve our problem, the meeting's over.
Uh, okay, got it.
Facetious way, but there will be lots of discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so Cease, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, the, the, for instance, like, I'd like to know, when I look through the budget, uh, what, whatever was decided that county council is going to. Change, uh. Line item R five, which is a donation. Is that number now firm? Do, do we have a number in there that is not? Conditional on anything? It's a, it's a flat number that's going in? Has it been confirmed by Andrea? Not Andrea Robinson.
Sorry, in R five. Not, not in contrition from others, so that the number that we now have confirmed from the county is the one million, um. Two hundred and ten thousand and fifty dollars, so that, that, but so that is confirmed and that's the number that county council confirms. But, um, now that makes us go back to the drawing board because it's substantially less than what we had put together in our. Drafts one, two, and three of the budget, so now it's up to the board to decide, um. Whether to use the library reserve or how to allocate, um, those savings and then staff will take that direction from you. And, um, go ahead and make those changes.
So Cease, Cease, to put it in perspective.
Can I ask us? Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So now we have the number that we presented, uh, to, to county council in the budget revision three. Correct? That number is existence because that's the one that was submitted.
No, because we don't, we got a hundred and, the, there was a cut of.
Cease, Cease.
I, I understand what you're saying. I'm asking you a simple question. The number that we submitted. In revision three. Is a fixed number that we submitted at that time, correct?
Yes.
All right. So now we have a differential between what was in that budget. And the amount of money that was given in line R five, correct? That's, that's the deficiency. Okay, what is that number?
Uh, the difference is approximately a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Okay. So now we have a problem of finding a hundred and five thousand dollars. I, I went very, I listened very carefully to what you had submitted and I've read that, that budget very well. There's no way in this God's earth can we find a hundred and five thousand dollars regardless of what we do. That's just not going to happen. The only way that could happen is dramatic changes. And, and at the end of the day, we do have that surplus, and I've listened to the argument about whether we should or should not use the surpluses. Having said that. Uh, there's a lot of things that are going to happen in twenty twenty-four that are going to determine whether or not that was or was not a good decision. And in my personal opinion is, I, I think we should just absorb that hundred and five thousand dollar differential. From, um, the reserves, and I understand that's not popular, but nevertheless, it's a case. It is still going to leave us a hefty reserve. And then knowing that, that, that this same argument is going to happen in twenty twenty-five. We should work towards what we're going to do for that argument. Because if the idea is to increase over what they had contributed this year. Then basically what we might do is come up to what we were, 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 were given in twenty twenty-three or slightly more. Now that's when the discussion for whether we should or should not have additional closures and major cuts. To me, um, if we ask you to do that now, we're going to throw the, 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 the library staff into a total turmoil. And, and, and I'm not comfortable with that at all. Whereas the solution is pretty well there in a short-term twenty twenty-four only solution. Uh, and that we can start looking over twenty twenty-four for a much better twenty twenty-five solution. That's just my thoughts. I think we're going to be spending a lot of time spinning our wheels going nowhere. We're not going to find a hundred and five thousand dollars without closing major, uh, facilities or not opening other ones. As you said, or making major adjustments to timing. That, that, to me, is just all wrong, with, without, without a, a much heavier deliberation than a couple of hours at, at a budget meeting.
Thank you, Cease. Um, Val, you want to add anything?
Um. I, I'm not really big on, um, you know, like, if, if it was going to solve the problem, going to the reserves. I understand Lisa's, uh, point of view there and. Uh, but I think in the long term, we're just putting a Band-Aid on it. Um, I think, you know. That, it, it's not we're, we're picking on the libraries. I think, uh, all, all governments today has got to take a hard look at, uh. Making some big decisions here in the future in regard to, like, I, I've had more people say to me this spring what their taxes are. How much they are. And they just keep going up and up and up and, um, we have to, uh, I think, just start to, to manage it, not that we haven't been, but. Um. If, if you wanted to, uh, take the money out of reserves, I mean, I, I have no problem with that, but I, I think that it, uh. It, it, you have to start with somehow, there's got to be some, uh. Restructuring of, uh, of staff or. Or, or, or the libraries, because, uh, unless, you know, there's going to be a pot of gold at the end of the day here, but I don't think that's going to happen. So. I, and, and again, I'm not, uh. Trying to, I'm not here endorsing shutting libraries down, but I'm, I know that. Uh, we have to be really accountable, and that's what we're trying to be.
Thank you, Val, Jennifer.
That's, that's my opinion. I'm only speaking for, there's a lot of other counselors around the table, but that's my opinion.
Thanks, Val. Jen?
Um. I do. See the proposition of taking for reserves for one year as a stopgap and not a Band-Aid. And the reason is. If Andrea is able to successfully undertake, and it's a, you know, gosh, it's a big ask. But if Andrea is able to do a systems review of how staffing works. S- um, see if things can be shifted as na- as the natural opportunities arise in the way that she described. Two meetings ago. Then. In an ideal world, at the end of this financial year, there will be a natural savings there. And and the idea of taking from reserves this year. Is. Something that would enable us to see. See the year through without making a slash med- measure, which has not come from an informed. Thorough analysis of how things work, so. Ideally, and again, Andrea, I can't, I'm not saying that. I'm asking you to guarantee that this is possible, it may or may not be, but I think we're all optimistic that when you. When you provide us with that June twelfth report, that we're all really looking forward to. That there will have been a thoughtful analysis, which will mean that. A certain portion of operating costs for next year's budget will be naturally lower than it was. At the beginning of this year, and that that was, that was the argument for for. Well, not that it was county council's business of where to take the money from, but the idea is, you know, give us a chance to. To do a sophisticated look at this, so that by this time next year. We will have found some savings there, so that for me is the difference between a stopgap and a Band-Aid, which is not sustainable. And my hope is that it's just the stopgap.
Thank you, Jen, Paul.
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in that I I'm not a a big fan or in favor of taking money out of the bank. Of taking it out of the reserves, but at the same time, if half of the money will remain for a future rainy day or potential rainy day. Then it's better than losing it all um, and. The ability to have six months to look at, or maybe even longer to look at. What we can do to rejig or refine or reduce some of the uh, the financial issues. It's much better than that we can do it. In one meeting or a couple meetings, it gives a chance to re. Keep looking at it and take another kick at the can, so I'm in favor then of. Of taking the money and using it for the current year as well.
Jackie.
It's only three months that we're talking about. If we're talking about June twelfth being when, when Andrea would have this complete analysis, it's three months, which. It's already three months into twenty twenty four, so it's, yeah, it's 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 quick. Um. Yeah, so not, not, so with the analysis being. The data, kind of data you've already been developing or gathering is to when people are using. The library most, which branches and that's all that stuff, so, so, yeah, it is a big um. Big data collection thing apart from doing the the staff. Model staffing analysis, that's, that's like one part, and then it's the other part, so there's, there's two different sides to it, so it is a big. A big job, um, I have mixed feelings about. Taking a hu- a huge. Amount out of. Out of reserves, because it's like, well, okay, does that mean we're going to be in the same boat next year, and of course, Jen, you're saying if we're not. We're hopefully not going to be asking for as much next year, but um. There there is the the uh, the fear of spending the entire rainy day uh. Rainy day reserves on um, just operating. Which um, was a little scary.
Thank you. Okay, so um, my turn. So one of the things about being chair of a board is you're terribly restricted. I can't move a motion. I can only vote when there's a tie. And I can't get too engaged in discussion. Uh, throughout the meeting. My job is to chair the meeting. But I continue to have the ability as chair to have an opinion. On everything that the library does. And I do not support at all, never have in my forty years in municipal government. Never supported taking reserves for operating. Purposes, even in the short term or the interim term or my part time term. I'm completely opposed to it. But my opinion doesn't matter, because I don't get to vote, so don't worry about it. It's just the way I've I've been taught and learned, and if you ask anybody in the municipal world. A finance person or a C O, they will tell you that touching reserves for operating is unknown. Even if it's temporary. I appreciate very much the rationale put forward for it. But for it, don't get me wrong, I understand completely why it's being done. And it is an interim short term solution, but I predict there will be long term consequences, so. I'll stop talking there. Jen?
Yes, in in my slightly fewer number of years, uh, six that I've been uh, on coun- on council. Uh, I have learned to be very much in agreement with you. You would never take from reserves in order to fund operating as a general principle. The only reason I see this as an exception now is because, as Lisa elucidated. Um, the building. The major capital expenses, even the furniture, they would not be borne by those reserves, the the capital. Need. That the library board has. Is so small in comparison, proportionate comparison with what's there. Uh, it would be. I can't even think what. What we would need in order to. Use up that number of reserves, there are no graders, there's no building repair, there's nothing like that, so in it's really a finite situation in which I would say, yeah, I get. I get this idea, I I do understand the benefit behind this idea.
And as I said, I completely appreciate the rationale for the for the point of view. I watched the, I watched the YouTube presentation, counsel, and you had a great discussion. And you see your appointment was well taken about, you know, this is a rainy day. Um, and it's a rainy day, not for the library or the county or or. Just all of us, or happens. So. I I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose something, and I'm gonna step out of my post, sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Cease, before I finish up, go ahead.
Yeah, the the like, I I I understand everybody's argument so far. But I'm comparing this to basically the day after we were all closed for COVID. Who the hell knew that was going to happen? And at the end of the day, everything we understood and knew prior to that day. No longer was in effect. So we had been hit with a catastrophic. Uh, uh, impact on our way of operating, and we had to adjust accordingly. So some of the things that we otherwise. Would not have done had to be done. And I think we're in a similar scenario here. If anybody who listened knows, I am absolutely against, same as you are, Dave. About using reserves. Having said that. I am not interested, nor do I want to be part of. Any kind of a discussion in the two hours that's going to determine whether or not we're going to close libraries or not. Because obviously, I have a personal interest there as a representative Highlands East. Where are the only libraries that could be closed? They're certainly not going to be in Halliburton or Minden. Highly unlikely if they're in Algonquin Highlands, so they will be in Highlands East. Having said that. I'm not against it, I'm merely asking to be able to go back to the people of of Highlands East, to the council of Highlands East. With a logical argument as to why this needs to be done. And what we're doing, if if I understand correctly. Is 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 when Andrea has had the opportunity on on in June. To come back with the final solution, which is basically this is it, folks, there ain't no more money coming from anywhere, and if it is, it's going to be very trivial. Then we can sit down and have a solid conversation of where the heck are we going? Because it's going to affect more than just people, it's going to affect a lot of things. If you're closing one or two branches of a library, it's going to have a traumatic impact on everything, not just one or two lines. And and to try to deal with that now on a supposition that it may or may not happen, or to make an arbitrary decision. That we're going to 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 be in a position, we're going to have to close them. Uh, that's going to put a lot of people in a lot of a bad place. And I don't believe it is a Band-Aid, I believe it is exactly what Jennifer said it was, and I think in some respects, Lisa said the same thing. It it is merely a way to put a pause button on a decision which. May or may not be inevitable, but at least should be well thought through. And 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 I think it's going to take more than a week or two, it's going to take three or four months to come up with what I consider to be a really rational solution. And we have no alternative if we want to get that time to make those kind of intelligent decisions to draw from reserves, there is no other way to do it. It's not like I want to, because, believe me, I argued that we shouldn't. Having said that, it puts me in a position where I have no other option. Other than to arbitrarily close libraries and uh. I I I just find that to be i- in in a in a one hour meeting, all wrong, just totally all wrong.
Okay, anybody else wanting to opine on the subject? Then I pro- propose someone put forward a motion regarding use of reserves, I can't do it, so if somebody else wants to do it. Go ahead and we'll cast that vote now, and then. Move on after that.
I prefer it be somebody that's not on council.
Yeah. So I'm looking at, I'm looking at Paul.
And just because you put the motion on the floor doesn't mean you have to vote.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just to get it on.
So Paul, Paul will move the motion, Jackie, will you second it?
Yes.
Okay, motion on the floor is that we use one hundred and five thousand dollars. For my reserve fund towards our nine, twenty twenty four operating budget. Any discussion on that? All in favor, raise your hands, please. Well, you in favor? Yeah, okay. Motion is carried. So there we go, our budget will be, for the year will be one million, three hundred fourteen thousand dollars, eight hundred and six, three hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars, which is what we asked for. The difference between what we asked for and what we're told we're going to get in the budget is a hundred and five thousand dollars. So we're whole.
Just uh, pointing for you, so that the one million, three hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred one dollars is the county council request. Um, so the full amount of the budget, um.
That was our ask.
Yeah, that was our ask.
Yeah.
Five uh, thousand dollars. Brings us back, but we still have the other um.
You have the other.
Revenue line, so. I think that the total in our draft three. Uh, should be.
Oh, yeah, I'm just, I'm just talking about the.
Yeah.
I know there's federal money. And that that's not affected by. Okay. All right, Jen?
Um, Andrea, without wishing at all to undermine your. Your timing for this report, I wonder if I could just ask, do you think twelve June is? A great chunk of time, or would you like another month? I don't, you know, if. I don't want you to come back to us to ask for more time, we can say, hey, take the time you need, like, it doesn't have to be that way, it can be, if you think more time would would be beneficial, then I'm certainly open to that. Do you want?
Something like that, Andrea, you say thank you very much, I'll take it.
It was the agreement said, June twelfth, it's been fair enough.
Just nod your head.
So I'll take the time, but I would like to say that uh, the timing, because of course I would like more time, but the timing really was um. Um, to align things with the collection development coordinators retirement.
Okay.
To get the changes approved, so that when we repost the position, that it's kind of all. Kind of being done. A puzzle, trying to coordinate for the work around the retirement.
Okay, got it.
Got it.
My understanding was really of the staffing review was really to focus on. The administrative team and how to find efficiencies there, because you recall the whole discussion was born out of. Why not just not fill the deputy CEO role, so that's the whole reason, yeah, for this, and I'm not, I'm not a magician, like, it's um. I'm not. We can tweak workflows um, on the team. But if we're doing a larger staffing model review, like, it's one thing to buy June, look at. Who does what in the admin team and try to find some savings there, but looking at the whole. Library system and. We're not going to find the savings that we need for next year's budget in the admin team, it's just not feasible, it's not realistic. So this, using money from reserves, it's a stopgap, and as Cease was mentioning, it buys time. But it's um. There will still be hard decisions if um, we're not in for twenty twenty five. Going to go back to a request from the county, um.
Cease, go ahead.
Andrea, thank you very much for that, and 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 I appreciate where where you are, and and. You're between a rock and a hard place, and if there's anything else that could be put into there to equivalent to that, you're in the middle of all of it. So so I I really do have empathy for what you're 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 going to, you're you're doing and what you're going to be trying to do. But go back to 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 the timeline that we we've set. I think if we were to have a much better idea, say, July first. Of where we're going to be standing as opposed to. Uh, February first. That gives us a lot more time to start thinking about where are we going? Because to to drop that on anybody, you know, in in February, just just is is not right, now, having said that, that's not your fault. That's because nobody gave you the money that you wanted, okay, but now we pretty well know. That that condition may or may not change going into twenty twenty five, that is, there could be another restricted. Budget in twenty twenty five. If that's the case, and we 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 understand that's a possibility. Early in July, then that gives us a full six months to determine what we're going to do. And if there is an option or 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 something that would avoid the closure or other dramatic type scenarios. That would be affecting the board. Or affecting the libraries themselves, and and I think that the that that. That that's the way we should handle it, because then, as as uh, Jen is saying. It would not be a knee jerk thing, it would be, we have to go back to the people and say, look. It, you know, we went around this thing as many times as we could, and the and the logic is, we have to make these major adjustments in the way the library operates. And and we're going to have six months to take on that argument. And 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 to to try to remediate it, if if all possible. Um. As opposed to uh. To waiting until a budget sign to do that, because it's. It's it's not going to be, if if we're still going to be short. Eighty, ninety thousand dollars after all of what you're doing. That that's that's going to be a major problem coming into uh, into the twenty twenty five budget timeline, and I don't want to deal with it in 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 January, I'd rather deal with it in July or August.
The, so we have a meeting in June, and then we have the the next meeting in September, so we don't, um, the library board doesn't meet in. Uh, in the summertime, so we have to look at that uh, timing, and again, just to come back to the decision making, we will have to. Post jobs, um. And some of the timing could be changed, but but there is a retirement, and. The flexibility really does hinge around the transition of positions, um. So potentially what we could do is divide it into two pieces maybe, so. Look at the admin team workflow and rules for uh, the June meeting, and then in the fall, look at the larger.
And we could, we had to, we could have a special meeting if we had to, right, like, I mean.
If we need.
I don't think. In the summer.
Yeah, sure.
So I I, you know, you know. I mean, the decision is yours, but my preference would be to focus on how the administration works for June, and then uh, at the. September, October meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Operating.
You decide you need to be limited?
No, I think that's just direction. Um, okay. Having made that decision now, um. Because I I think, I don't think we need to have any further discussion on the budget per se. Until Andrea comes back with her recommendations in June. Which will be the start of whatever we're going to do going forward after that from an admin point of view. And then we'll do the rest whenever you're ready for it. But I would consider this the twenty twenty four budget. Of the county uh, Pellet Library is now done. Given the fact we're going to use a hundred and five thousand dollars of reserves. To make up the difference between what we put forward and what the county gave. Is that fair? But are you okay with that? Okay.
And we still have the additional reserves allocations, which we're already decided on.
Yeah, so I just did a, I just did a quick calculation, Andrea, if we have two hundred and twenty two thousand. Seven hundred give or take. In reserves right now, we're going to add seventy thousand, give or take. We'll have about two hundred and ninety two thousand, give or take. You take a hundred and five off that, we've got. One hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars left, is that right? Something like that.
Plus the eighty three.
Right?
Plus the eighty three that we've already allocated.
Plus the eighty three. Plus the eighty-three.
Yeah, eighty-three helping.
Yeah, eighty-three's gone. So, um, that's kind of where the numbers are.
That's a helping reserve, probably.
It's, you know, it's pretty good.
Still helping.
Yeah, okay, so having said that, the next item on the agenda is a municipal roundtable. Um, I think as far as the most important municipal roundtable discussion over the last few times since the last meeting. Was the county council budget discussion, so we consider that done unless you want, you guys want to add something else? Okay. That was a great meeting, by the way. I watched it. It's been a long time since I watched an entire council meeting, but I feel like that one. Um, so thank you very much. Um, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. That, that's the next item. Moved by. Jen is decent. Uh, okay. Next meeting is. Um, April tenth.